All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Vice Mayor Ashby. Here. Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gara.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Laloie, would you be willing to lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please?
I sure will. All right. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal land. To the original people of this land, the Nissinam people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plain Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of Wiltor Rancheria, Sacramento's only federal recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloie. A colleague just reminded me, and I think it's noteworthy, that in 15 minutes, it is now 2:07 by my clock, in 15 minutes, for the second time in a day, but the last time in a century, it will be 2:22:22, with the time being 2:22. So I just wanted to point out that we're living through a unique moment here in in the City Council of Valensway. Thank you.
Can't imagine anyplace else I'd rather be, Mayor.
Thank you for the reminder. 2:22:22. Okay. Very good, members. We do have one important item today, and that is to address the audit of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, the audit that was performed by, or performed, but that was completed by our Office of the City Auditor. I'd like to turn this over to our City Auditor, Jorge Osaguetta, and his team for a presentation, and then we're going to get into a very important discussion, and of course, hear from members of the commission as well as members of the community. Okay. Thank you for that interlude, Mr. Osaguetta. Jorge, you're on mute. Never heard that before. Okay? It's a little button.
So you're just practicing for your stand-up routine, Daryl?
Well, you always got to be prepared.
You got to have a backup.
Exactly.
Sorry about that. My Zoom quit on me just as you handed it over to me, so bear with me.
No problem. Take your time.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we do.
Perfect, all right. So, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jorge Osaguetta, your City Auditor. With me today are members of the team that performed the audit, Lynn Bashaw and Kevin Christensen. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the City Auditor's audit of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. In accordance with the City Auditor's 2021 audit plan, the objective of this audit was to determine whether the Sacramento Police Department responded to changes to policies and practices as recommended by the commission. In addition, we determined whether the structure and the authority of the commission is consistent with best practices in civilian oversight of law enforcement agencies. We reviewed best practices, law review articles, and policy analysis related to formation and operation of civilian oversight of law enforcement agencies. We also reviewed policies and procedures for 45 civilian oversight of law enforcement agencies for cities and counties with populations between 250,000 and 1.4 million residents. This audit also included an assessment of the 110 recommendations issued by the commission and Sacramento Police Department's responses between 2018 and 2021. The report included three findings and 16 recommendations. Over the last several decades, the issues of trust and accountability have moved to the forefront of community police relations. During this period, the creation of organizational mechanisms for reviewing and improving officer conduct have increased. One mechanism for increasing accountability is civilian oversight of law enforcement. There are currently about 160 active civilian oversight entities across the country, and importantly, no two entities are alike. Key goals of creating a civilian oversight structure include improving public trust, ensuring accessible complaint processes, promoting thorough, fair investigations, increasing transparency, and determining police misconduct. For the purposes of this report, we relied heavily on the best practices promulgated by the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, also known as NACOL. Based on our work, we found that the growth of the civilian oversight of law enforcement has yielded many different structures and approaches. According to NACOL, these structures can be categorized in four different models or systems. The first one being a review-focused model. These types of oversight agencies provide community members outside of and unaffiliated with the law enforcement agency with an opportunity to review the quality of misconduct complaint investigations performed by the overseeing department. The second is a monitoring auditing-focused model. These types of oversight agencies employ professionally trained investigative staff to conduct investigations of alleged misconduct independently of the overseeing department's Internal Affairs Unit. The third is an investigation-focused model. And these types of oversight agencies, they are created to promote broad organizational change by addressing systemic issues, analyzing patterns and trends, addressing deficiencies in policies and procedures, and making recommendations. And finally, and most relevant to the city of Sacramento, are hybrid agencies and hybrid systems. A hybrid agency may primarily focus on one oversight function while also performing other functions such as reviewing internal investigations and auditing policy compliance. In a hybrid system, a single jurisdiction may have multiple agencies overseen by the same department, such as an independent investigative agency and an inspector general, or a monitor agency and a civilian board acting in an advisory capacity to the law enforcement agency and/or other civilian oversight agencies. This is the structure that we have here in Sacramento. As discussed in the last slide, the city of Sacramento's civilian oversight is a hybrid system comprised of three different agencies, each with a different role in oversight. In November of 2016, the City Council empowered OPSA, the Office of Public Safety and Accountability, with authority to conduct investigations related to civilian complaints. OPSA tracks and monitors high-profile or serious complaint cases to conclusion, reviews completed investigations, and advises of any deficient investigations. In November of 2016, the City Council established the role of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission to review police policies and procedures in an advisory capacity. In July of 2020, the City Council authorized the creation of an Office of Inspector General and provided full independence and authority to investigate officer-involved shootings and use of force incidents that result in serious bodily injury or death. As seen on this slide, the City Code discusses three areas of focus for the commission. The first is making recommendations to the City Council regarding police policy, procedures, and best practices, including community relations, hiring and training best practices. The commission was also charged with reviewing quarterly reports prepared by OPSA relating to the number, kind, and status of all civilian complaints filed against the Sacramento Police Department. The purpose is to identify potential patterns of misconduct. Finally, the commission is tasked to, at least annually, report and make recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding the activities of the commission and the Sacramento Police Department's efforts to strengthen biased-free policing and community police relations. This brings us to our first finding. The first finding in this report focuses on the City Code language establishing the commission. We found that the City Code does not comprehensively define the authorities of the commission and stakeholder agencies, including the Sacramento Police Department and the Office of Public Safety and Accountability. In other words, the City Code language pertaining to the commission should be revisited to more specifically define what the commission can do, what it can't do, what powers does it have to complete its duties, and what the agency is supposed to do and define how. We found that the current lack of specificity has resulted in confusion and frustration about what the commission has the authority to do and what authority does it have to carry out its purpose and mission. Our first recommendation highlights the need to engage in a discussion about the roles, purpose, mission, and authorities of the commission. Our second finding focuses on more closely on the resources needed by the commission to perform its purpose, mission, and duties. The findings include seven sub-findings and 10 recommendations. Our sub-findings include: The city does not provide sufficient staff support and/or funding to allow the commission to fulfill its purpose and duties. The City Code does not require commissioners to complete training. The city does not provide sufficient tools to allow the commission to communicate with the public and stakeholders. The commission does not issue annual reports. The city and the community have not established performance metrics for the commission. The commission members have not been provided City of Sacramento email accounts. And finally, the commission's access to information should be more clearly defined. As part of our review, we relied heavily on the best practices issued by the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement and also the U.S. Department of Justice Guidance. We also benchmarked against 45 oversight structures and agencies in cities throughout the United States. Our second finding contains 10 recommendations, which include recommendations to determine the commission's staffing needs, responsibilities of staff, and funding and placement for staff. We also recommend the commission have required training established and that the commission be provided additional tools to enhance public engagement. The second finding also includes recommendations that address the benefit of annual reporting, establishing performance indicators for the commission, establishing city email accounts for the commission members, and better detailing the level of access to information needed by the commission to fulfill its roles and duties. Our third finding focuses more specifically on defining what the commission's recommendations look like, what departments in the city should respond, and whether the recommendation implementation should be tracked. We found that between 2018 and 2021, the commission issued a total of 110 recommendations, and less than half have been responded to in writing by the Sacramento Police Department. However, we should note that responses in writing are not required by the Sacramento Police Department. However, the Sacramento Police Department began providing responses in writing at the request of the City Council last year. It is also important to note that both the commission and the Sacramento Police Department officials stated that the Sacramento Police Department has regularly attended commission meetings, including commission ad hoc meetings, and provided verbal responses frequently and contributed to discussions about recommendations. In our review of other jurisdictions, we found that the oversight agency was required to include specific information in its approval or recommendations. This information can include the policy reasoning for the change, the discussion of the legal need for the change, and the information about implementation. In turn, many of these jurisdictions require that the police respond in writing and specify why the law enforcement agency either agrees or disagrees with the recommendation. Responding in writing would provide the law enforcement agency an opportunity to lay out potential difficulties with implementation and implementing the recommendation. Finally, this process provides the opportunity for the oversight body and the law enforcement agency to agree on a form or template that will increase the efficiency of responding by formalizing an agreed-upon process. In our review of other jurisdictions, we also found that other agencies have designed and required that civilian oversight agency recommendations be tracked and reported on. We found that different jurisdictions have implemented different methods of tracking recommendations. These include creating a matrix, as can be seen on this slide. Others have implemented more sophisticated computer-based tracking applications that are posted on the agency's website that include information on the recommendation, the law enforcement the law enforcement agency's response, and whether the recommendation has been implemented. Our third finding included five recommendations which focused on establishing a format for commission recommendations, determining the desired police response, council voting on recommendations, and how best to track and disclose the implementation of supported recommendations. The Office of the City Auditor would like to thank the commission, the Sacramento Police Department, and the Attorney's Office, and the Office of Public Safety and Accountability for their assistance and cooperation during this audit. We would also like to thank NACOL, and in particular, their Director of Training and Education, Cameron McElhaney, for their assistance in helping us gain an understanding of police oversight and best practices. We understand that the city is committed to continuous improvement, and we look forward to continuing to work with the City Council, management, OPSA, and the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission to ensure that changes that are made adequately address the issues identified in this report. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Auditor, for a very important and thorough report. I boy, I have a lot to say about this, but I want to make sure that we hear from the public and that we hear from my colleagues. I do have a very specific suggestion. I'm going to just play it out without explaining why, and then when it's my turn, I'm going to talk about why I think this is so important. The Police Review Commission needs a full-time executive officer, either a new position or filling a vacant position, but somebody who works exclusively with and for the commission itself. And I think if we do that, many of these concerns expressed in the audit and the recommendations put forward by the auditor will be fulfilled. Absent that, if we keep trying to staff the commission in, let's call it, hybrid ways, I think we're going to be round and round and round again and again with this same problem. So I won't explain the why, but I'm going to just put that out there for people to think about, and then turn it over to, I see Mario Guerrero here, I don't know if there's other members of the commission. Who here represents the commission?
Good afternoon, Mayor. I didn't know if that meant you wanted me to say a few words.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's appropriate. Well, all right. Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, thank you for having me here. Mario Guerrero, immediate past Chair of the Commission. We just elected a new Chair and Vice Chair. So congratulations to them. By way of context, I just wanted to provide that both Vice Chair Carter and myself worked with the City Auditor's Office on this audit, and that we highly commend Mr. Osaguetta and his team for doing a great job. Vice Chair Carter wasn't able to attend today. She has a family emergency that she's taking care of. I also want to say that we highly commend SacPD and Chief-Elect Kathy Lester. I don't know if that's permanent yet, so that's why I say Chief-Elect. It's been a great partnership recently. And generally, we absolutely concur with the findings of the Auditor's Office in the three areas mentioned: clarifying roles, investment in the commission, and strengthening the process. You know, the commission, many of our recommendations are in line with all of this work. For example, clarifying roles. We have many recommendations. The commission has many recommendations in this area. For example, requiring SacPD to directly communicate with the commission, require SacPD to attend commission meetings, attend agenda-setting meetings, and to present the information requested so long as it is within the scope of the commission. So SacPD has been doing many of these things, but that is not the point. The point is that we need to make sure, as the audit says, that all parties understand what is required of them, that things are not a courtesy, it's how we work together. Investment in the commission. The commission has asked for staff support, and to be clear, it's not staff support for OPSA, staff that works on commission work only. There are things in the audit that are not part of the commission's recommendations, but that are welcomed. So for example, training for the commissioners, absolutely welcome that. The third, strengthening process. Again, the commission has recommendations in this area. For example, we asked that the City Council adopt the process, hopefully within three months, to act on recommendations. Once the recommendations get to the City Council, the commission takes so much time to work on these recommendations and ensure that the public input is there. So we feel that this work needs to be honored with a vote at the City Council. So in summary, we agree with the findings of the City Auditor's Committee. We have been working well with SacPD. But all three of these items, clarifying roles, investment in the commission, and strengthening process are things that we must do. My questions that remain are: Why do we need an audit to tell us these things when the commission has been saying many of these things for quite some time? And why have we not had a vote yet on commission recommendations, with the exception of one thing? There's been four years of recommendation, and I feel like a broken record. And so I come before you once again and ask, and I plead that we not wait too long before the City Council gets to vote on those recommendations. So that's my feedback, and I appreciate your time, the time that you've given.
Thank you so much, Mario, for your service and for being honest about your frustration. We'll speak to it in a moment. By the way, we are going to bring back the recommendations in several weeks, working with the city manager. You know, there's a little more vetting, and we understand that, but we're going to bring them back in the month of March, and and they will be heard. All right. Yes, Howard, go ahead.
I just want to clarify that we are bringing some of the recommendations back, not all of them, in March.
Okay. Well, we'll get started.
Thank you.
We will get started. Okay. So do we have members of the public who are raise their hands to testify?
Mr. Mayor, I currently have no hands raised to make public comment.
Okay, then let's turn it over to the members. Vice Mayor Ashby, Mayor Pro Tem Gara.
Mayor, my comments are a little bit more general and broad than just this committee.
It's fine.
I wanted to, first of all, thank our City Auditor for doing a great job. He met with me quite some time ago about this audit, and we talked a lot about it initially when he was walking through it. And I know he's worked with the clerk as well, and you are going to get, Mayor, as a result of your request of the PMPE Committee, some recommendations on how we make these committees and commissions relationship with the City Council a little bit more uniform, so that we're not just doing this one at a time, one committee at a time, that there's a process for it. You asked us to take a look at that. In the last couple of weeks, the PMPE Committee did approve our recommendation to the council, which is now working its way through the city process, and will come to you, and will answer many of the concerns here on how we get back to people in a timely manner, how we ensure that there are public hearings, and much of that was informed by this audit and by Mr. Osaguetta, because he did meet with us in advance to give us some of these findings. So we used that as part of the impetus for what we're trying to do. But Mayor, the reason I say my comments are broader is because those recommendations are not specific to any one board or commission. They're broader than that. As you requested, it's to create a sort of uniform response to how all these committees and commissions can be heard annually, and then receive feedback and have public hearings without the council just being overwhelmed by a lot of recommendations from a lot of different boards and no real way to address it. I will say, specific to this particular board, it's been my experience, I don't know if it's Councilmember Shenier's or not, I think we've been here for the whole time of this, but it does need a dedicated employee, and you will find that the clerk is going to ask it with her budget, she didn't already, and we didn't already give them to her, I think we did, for some positions to help with some of these changes to committees and commission. And this is definitely one of them that's been a bit challenging, and I think the council may need to have an internal, meaning human resources-type discussion around whose responsibility we all believe it is to be overseeing this board. And so that might be one of my recommendations to you, Mayor, is perhaps it would be a human resources discussion, because it would be about personnel, which you can't have quickly. But I think we need to have a conversation, because I think there are different ideas about who is staffing this board already. Okay?
And that's what I want to speak to. I floated a minute ago, but I want to come back and speak to why I think that this is just crucial. You just affirmed it, thank you, as did Chair Guerrero. So let's now go to Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Gara, then Councilmember Valenzuela.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think I made pretty detailed comments at the Budget and Audit Committee. But again, the point here, again, is that one of the recommendations that was brought to us almost a year ago, or here a year later, was to provide that additional staff support to be able to decipher how to move policies forward, and to help that the commission forward. So I think, you know, as part of our construction of the next fiscal 2022, 2023 budget, that that be part of the of that, the construction of that budget, that we had that FTE in that aspect of it. The other piece, I think, here also that the commission, the audit identifies, are a number of these recommendations that are just good governance, that the commission has actually recommended, and I think we need to take those up and vote on them. We, again, though they're almost a year old since that point, and the audit has confirmed that these are good processes to move forward, good for record-keeping, good for clarity, also good for communication between the department and the commission as well. So I am going to concur with the comments that Chair Guerrero, or immediate past Chair Guerrero, has mentioned, and how we can move them forward faster. Definitely, on the both the staffing and the training piece. The other piece that I also heard was that ensuring that we provide adequate training so that commissioners, as they're coming on, they're onboarded with a lot of the background and expertise on where we are and where we're involved in this commission.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Gara. Councilmember Valenzuela, then Harris.
Thank you, and yeah, I just want to echo Vice Mayor Ashby's point about the recommendations coming forward through PMPE. I mean, a lot of it is, training is there, right? I mean, for all of our commissions, they need to understand what they're working on, and it's going to look different for every commission. In this case, it might be a lot more in-depth, since there's a lot more technical knowledge. We want to make sure these commissioners have the city email accounts, right, for public records tracking, you know, these things that are extra work, and I'm glad that we're working forward on that. And I think the most important thing we talked about was the response process, because I brought up at PMPE that it's not just about when the commission submits things to us, it's about the process before our commission's recommendations get to us, which includes getting responses from city departments, right, because that could help inform, maybe they learned something they didn't know, maybe they get new information and they say, hey, that's different now, we want to change this. But to have that sort of iterative process before it gets to council, so that we're not litigating this in real time during a council meeting, but the commissioners have the benefit of those responses, and that we can really make sure that we have that really good information moving forward. I also agree with Vice Mayor about the need to have a more in-depth conversation about staffing and support and move in that direction as well. I will say, when it comes to the recos, that like, you know, I think I inquired with staff for City Manager Conlon about this probably just a couple of weeks ago. It's been since June is the last time we heard any recos, and part of the spring presentation included what I called like a bunch of consent And part of the spring presentation included what I called like a bunch of consent recos, which seemed to get misinterpreted, but I'm like, these were things that PD said, yeah, we agree with or we're already doing. And the commission said, hey, we want to make sure this happens. And so I think that there's a good amount that we can kind of clear the deck in terms of like, what is PD already doing, agreeing to? So we can just vote on it and say, yeah, we agree, set the direction, go and make sure that it's kind of cleared. And really make sure that especially this thing around, I think PD, you know, and I appreciate the staffing concerns, but you know, I was really, I will admit bother. This is before Chief Lester came into her role. When I saw a letter with PD saying, we're not going to come to one of your meetings. I believe it was a joint meeting with Measure U that the police commission did and the department said, we're not coming. And I don't think that should be our posture in any way with our commissions. And so I really do want to make sure, if nothing else today, that our direction is super clear, that we expect the police department to respond to information requests and recommendations from the commission and that they, we expect participation. I appreciate that there may have been factors going on behind the scenes, but I just want to state that super clearly because I do think that would just improve the commission's opportunity to do their job and improve the public trust and, and the overall process. And so I want to echo that and just urge as quick action as we can on these recos that just kind of keep piling up as more and more recos. I was surprised when I heard from my appointee that they were working on new recos, although I shouldn't have been because it's a new year and it's been over a year since those recommendations were, were finalized. And so it just kind of keeps stacking up. And so I hope we can really dedicate the time and have all of the information and that the commission gets the benefit of police response and city staff response before they finalize the recos that come to us. Because sometimes things were getting pointed out that I would hear, at least from my commissioner, we didn't know that. This is the first we're hearing that, that shouldn't be happening during a council meeting because they can't confer during a council meeting, right? And we want their input. That's how we did use of force this time, right? Was to send it back to the commission so we could get that input. And I'd like for that to happen before it comes back without delaying that, that March timeline as, as best we can. So that's it for me, mayor. Thank you for opportunity.
Mayor, my trying just for a second to, to provide a quick response to that. I, I think this is part of the problem and I agree with the structural issues that Jorge brought forward here. These recommendations are coming forward from the mayor and council. It's not a staff-driven process. And so I want to be real clear that we're happy to staff these commission meetings as needed. But we've not gotten direction from the council to have, you know, please respond to these numerous information requests in advance of recommendations being made. And I don't think that's practical.
You're right. You're absolutely right. And, and that's, that's why the commission needs a professional staff member who can be the interface between the commission and the city management and the police department and the mayor and the city council. It's not your job. In fact, it would be a conflict for the city management or the police department, good intentions aside, because there would be good intentions. But it would be a conflict for you to staff the commission in any way, anyway, because the commission is intended to provide oversight of the police department. And sometimes I think we forget that. And, and the audit, I think, helps us refocus on some of the, the basics about why the commission exists in the first place. And how we maybe are in the way in ways that we ought to, we ought to admit. And again, I'm previewing what I want to say in a moment, but you're right, Howard. Okay, Councilman Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, we do have a lot of oversight over our police department. We have the Office of Public Safety Accountability, we have the Inspector General that do direct oversight of our PD.
Right.
But, but it is true that we have not clearly delineated the responsibilities of the Police Review Commission. And that is something that was pointed out in the findings and I totally agree with. One that I think would be particularly helpful is a standardized form for recommendations from the Police Review Commission and responses by our police department to those recommendations, certainly before it comes to council. You know, there's a lot of talk about whether or not it's been staffed adequately and what the roles and responsibilities are. But one thing I want to point out right now is that I believe the Police Review Commission has served a, a valuable role thus far, even though it's not been clearly delineated. For instance, our foot pursuit policy came out of direct recommendations from the Police Review Commission. And Kiran Savan Sangwan brought forward recommendations that actually the police department took with our chief Han, looked at that, did some research and made changes to our foot pursuit policy that I think had been very beneficial to our constituents and to the police department. So it has served a valuable role, but it's been a little bit chaotic over time. Again, because there's not a clear delineation of roles and responsibilities. But I think that standardized form would be very important. Now, I, I'd like to ask Chief Lester. Kathy, I know that you have personally participated in many meetings with the Police Review Commission. Is it the police department? I don't know if I'd call it a policy, but it is, is it what you do to make sure that somebody, some representative from the police department is present at every Police Review Commission meeting?
Thank you for asking a question, council member. We, there's no written mandate and no policy about having a police representative there. But I know I've personally staffed the commission for a number of years because I think the work that they do is important and wanted to really be part of the conversation. I think we've had a lot of good conversations, both at the commission meeting, but especially at the ad hocs and the meetings that we have offline. So we've always really done that as just a matter of choice. And for the, the few times that we haven't been able to attend, generally, we don't have anything on the agenda, but we do ask the commission. You know, if they have questions or if there's anything we can provide ahead of time, because we try and keep that channel and that line of communication open. But to answer your question, there's not a mandate necessarily, but we, we, we do attend. And right now it is Lieutenant Greg Galliano who has taken over that role. And if he can't attend, it's Captain Martin Steiger, it's who attends those meetings.
Yeah. So in a voluntary way, you've been active participants with the Police Review Commission. And I've been aware of that for a long time and I appreciate it. But I think it would be best to sort of formalize a policy about that, just so that there's no ambiguity. And so that the Police Review Commission understands that they're being paid attention to as a matter of policy. Now, has there ever been an instance where information has been requested from PD that you chose not to furnish to the commission or could not because of legal reasons, et cetera?
Both of those have occurred where we either were not legally able to share the information or weren't able to fulfill the information request. Typically it's due to the scope or the lack of, you know, information available. For example, there's a large request about CAD data. And, you know, quite honestly, our system doesn't capture the data that's being requested. So what we try and do in those cases is explain why the data is not available. But we do try and make every attempt possible to fill those data requests and provide the information that the commission is requesting. You know, within what we're able to do.
Well, thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. You know, the, the issues here are really around communication. And there, there are expectations on both sides about what can and cannot be achieved. But if we formalize those in writing, I think that any kind of miscommunications would be non-existent. You know, there are times when you cannot provide the information. Again, a piece of this is delineating the duties of the Police Review Commission because they are not an investigative body. They're, they're an advisory body to the council. That is how they're set up so far. As far as oversight bodies, that's why we have OPSA and the Inspector General. They are truly, you know, oversight with some power and some clout over PD. But those recommendations from the Police Review Commission, I find to be rather valuable. And as long as we delineate those roles and responsibilities, I think that we can move forward with some confidence. So Vice Mayor Ash, no, geez, I've forgotten who's vice mayor. You're vice mayor, right, Angelique? Yeah. So as she said, she had, she heads up the PNP E committee. And we have made recommendations about how to deal with all of the commissions. Because quite frankly, these questions come up with many of our commissions that we have not been very clear about the work product that the commission is supposed to produce, about staffing clarity, about how the council will react to recommendations, recommendations that are tendered by said commissions. So I think we're on the right path here. I guess I just want to close by saying that if the Police Review Commission feels that they are not valued, that's certainly not the case on my behalf, and I don't think on behalf of the council, that the work they've done thus far has been valuable. Does that mean that we will accept all of their recommendations and take action on them? It does not. Some of the recommendations put forward by the commission were not, were not actually legal to implement. Some of them were perhaps even beyond the scope of what the city council might deliberate up. And, you know, in terms of state law, that state law superseded the recommendations. But nonetheless, the process can be remarkably improved, I think, through increased communication and by following the city auditor's report and the findings. So I would like to make a motion to accept the audit from the city auditor of the Police Review Commission.
Second. Good. Appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Jorge, thank you so much just for your hard work and your very thorough audit. I think many of us would agree that this audit really reaffirms what many of our commissioners have shared to this council in terms of improvement that's needed with our processes. I also just want to thank you Commissioner Guerrero and District Eight Commissioner Carter and all of the commissioners, really just for your public service. I, I know that it's a lot of hours that y'all put in to ensure that you can provide us with recommendations that you know are, is best for, for our city. Mayor, I really appreciate you calling at the beginning about investing in staff, which is I think a large part of this frustration because we know capacity is needed to support our commission. But I also just want to highlight, and I think I heard these, this from my colleagues, Councilmember Harris and Ashby as well, that the audit actually recommends that our city council need to adopt a process to either vote, to vote either one, to implement or two, to not implement our commission's recommendation. And this is something that our commission has recommended for us as well. I mean, you see it in the audit and it's also something that the commission have shared. So for example, I appreciate that some of the commission's recommendation will be brought forth in March. But as a councilwoman, I'm still unclear on how and why certain recommendations will be brought forth compared to others. That's one question that I do have for, for clarity, since I think the process piece is going to be really important. And I, I think the one thing that's, you know, from this audit that spoke to me is that, you know, our city code just, it doesn't require the city council to discuss or vote to approve or reject our police commission recommendation. And I think that itself is a really important item to consider, right? We could have an additional staff to staff the, or I wouldn't say additional, we can have a staff to staff the commission. But if we don't have a proxy, a process in place to either approve or reject the commission recommendations, I worry that we will, we will be back here again. My main question right now actually is for Vice Mayor Ashby, who's been leading a lot of the great work in PPE. I wanted to ask, you know, what is the timeline for PPE recommendations on how we bring forth recommendations from various commissions? I really appreciate all your hard work, the, the committee's hard work and was curious about what that timeline would look like, given it relates to this commission and all of our commission. For example, DAG had a recommendation, right? And wanted to know really what that timeline is, because I think that, that deals with the process as well. You okay for me to answer, Mayor? Is that all right?
Yeah, please, please.
Okay. Yeah. So we completed our process at PNP E with the full recommendation, including exactly what those documents would look like. And we had a really robust conversation, you heard some of it from Councilman Valenzuela and some from Councilmember Harris. And we made our recommendation, passed it unanimously and sent it back with the clerk. It's now going through our city process. So the city attorney's office, auditor, everybody who has to take a look at it. And then it will come to council for approval. And what it'll do, Councilmember Vang, is give these committees and commissions, let me, let me say this broadly. I think the Police Oversight Commission has a different issue that the mayor has really touched on and Councilmember Valenzuela and I have talked about in the past. We have a staffing issue where we're not all on the same page about who's staffing that committee or commission. We need to resolve that. I think that's an HR issue. Separate from that though, the process that PNP is bringing forward will allow each commission, like the Disability Advisory Commission, to have an annual hearing at PNP E and present all of their findings and recommendations. And there's a whole process leading up to that presentation that allows them to get the support they need from staff on answers and questions. And, you know, we're asking for which exact staff is responsible for each committee and commission and how those, how each of the people that are on the committee or commission are trained and staffed and, and prepared. And they know what they're, what they're looking to for the future year and what they're gonna presenting from the year past. So in other words, everyone, every committee and commission will get a public hearing at PNP E. Some of these are going to be easy and they don't really need a public hearing at city council. So they'll go on a consent calendar at city council. Others are going to be a recommendation from PNP E, but then they're probably also going to have a hearing at city council. You'll get that whole suite of recommendations that addresses almost all these points. Again, I'd like to just reiterate, we didn't like preemptively think of them all. We, I met with Jorge prior to this audit being released so that we knew what the issues specifically were. And Mindy's been working on it for quite some time, probably over a year. Mindy, do you have any idea how quickly those, I know there's a package of items and I know it's two, that they'll come to city council for approval?
I would say within the next few months, boards and commissions, a city code 2.40, boards and commissions generally is with the DORC process right now, and then that will come forward to council. And then the process to do evaluations annually for boards and commissions will follow that.
Mayor's going to make fun of the name of the process. Don't do it, Derek. I can read it. I can hear it coming off of your lips.
I already did it today. Yes.
So as soon as that's done, it'll come, but probably by the end of March, but it might take the beginning of April. There's a lot of legal logistics to the recommendations that we suggest. For example, Councilmember Valenzuela asked about emails. And so we have to go to IT, has to figure out if they're, what the legal ramifications are of giving out email addresses. We've asked for all that, should come back with complete answers.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, just really quick, first, since, and this question is for City Manager Chan. You had mentioned that in March, recommendations were going to be brought forth for the council to consider, but not all of them. And I was just unclear on, on why or how certain recommendations will be brought forth. Would you be able to just clarify that? I'm just, just processes, yeah.
There are some recommendations. I can't remember the number of them that have that have come to the commission through the mayor's office they're going to take forward. So again, this is a yes, yes, I, I can't remember if they're
Seven. There's seven of them and they're all process-related recommendations. Yes.
And for the other recommendations, will that go through PP and E?
It's up to, it's up to this council how you want them to come forward. Because they're, they are the recommendations of the, the commission, not of the city staff.
Sounds good. The process we're recommending is that everything start with PNP E, obviously from this point forward. And then PNP E can identify which ones are priorities and place that on the council agenda with the, with the grace of the mayor. So basically right now it's me, but in a year it'll be somebody different on that PNP E who will reach out to the mayor and say, here are the package of recommendations being submitted by the animal care control board. Here are the five we think are urgent, here are two we think are probably controversial. So you're probably going to want to have a hearing on it. Or we might say Ethel Hart Foundation has nothing controversial. We suggest you put this on the consent calendar. You see what I'm saying? So everything should go through that process first. I know what you're asking about is the existing ones. And if we don't deal with them prior to this process being put in place, then they would come back to PNP E as a suite of the, of their, their recommendations to be reviewed by, by staff. Because some of those things have still not been reviewed.
Okay. So just for clarity, all commission recommendations will go through PP and E to be filtered if it deems important to move it to the full council for consideration. I just
In the end, all, the whole suite of recommendations will come to the council too. Nothing will be filtered out from the council. But there may be some effort to like move priority things forward from PNP E and/or to identify things that need further discussion by the council. But there may be some effort to like move priority things forward from PMPE and or to identify things that need further discussion by the council. But everything would make its way back to the council, but it would be laid out in a process where, so for example, like, you know, Brandy Boyd really wants to have a public hearing. She would get that public hearing, and then potentially it would not be so difficult at council that it could just be adopted if it wasn't controversial at all, but there was still a public hearing where people could participate.
Expand just because I want to make super clear that like, it's not optional for the chair and the committee to not forward things. It's really us being like a filter. And so like, we talked about that, that it's like, it's not gonna get stuck at PMPE because we're like, oh, we disagree. That's not a policy hearing. It's a procedural hearing and opportunity for us to check in on how they're doing and uh based on the goals that they've established and and also to decide as as I just want to say that because somebody just messaged me and said, oh, so like, and I'm like, no, no, this is
And a preset mandatory calendar so that they have dates certain to work.
You know, also, you know, help focus uh resources from the staff side in order to prioritize which ones come first, because we can't take them all forward at the same time.
Right. So, uh but Councilmember Vang is also asking the question that maybe we can't answer today. And that is, other than the seven recommendations that we plan to bring forward in the month of March that have already been analyzed, if you will, by the city staff, we still have to determine how the existing recommendations are come, going to come forward, especially if it's going to take a little bit more time for the PMPE committee to develop its protocol, so to speak, for how it wants to deal with recommendations uh from not just the police commission, but from other commissions. So that's still to be determined. Um ca- Councilmember Vang, and maybe that leads, if you, if you don't mind, to to my why I feel so strongly about this personnel issue. This whole system of government that we have, and I'm I'm, I'm beyond trying to change it, but this whole system of government that we have is dependent upon collaboration and cooperation between the various centers' power. And thankfully, because of the personalities here involved, we have that, and I'm grateful for that. But I think if we're really honest about it, especially when it comes to this police review commission, we will admit collectively that if we want to identify the problem, we all need to look in the mirror. Because it is us. And and what do I mean by that? First of all, I do think that we unconsciously as a city organization, sometimes chafe at the idea of oversight. Oversight is uncomfortable, but it's also essential. And when the city council, prior to my becoming mayor, put this all forward, the intention was to have the Police Review Commission provide policy-related oversight, even if it is uncomfortable and sometimes critical of the city. That's just the way that it is and the way it has to be, with the constructive intention of helping us be better and improve our policies and our practices. And then you'll, you'll look at the way we set this thing up, and I think it was uh forget which council member it was. It might have been Councilmember Getta, who talked about the distinctions here. OPSA, in my recollection of the brief history, was never intended to be a an entity to make policy recommendations to the city council, at least um in the broad sense. They're supposed to investigate individual cases, and then maybe out of those individual cases, present their findings, which may include recommendations. The Police Review Commission is supposed to actually look at the big picture and the specific policies, and where they find um the city practices either out of line with uh the rest of the country, or where they see a a pattern and practice of a problem, they're supposed to put forward real recommendations to us. And it is not the job. And I know Howard is so conscientious, frankly, that he is willing to help any part of the city operation that is, you know, that is having trouble getting the support that it needs. But he made the decision a couple of years ago with me to take OPSA out of the city manager's side and put it over on the mayor and council's side, and for good reason. Because that's not where it belongs. It's, it's not the personality. We couldn't ask for a better personality or set of personalities here with the city manager and the, and this new police chief. But but structure-wise, it's the fox guarding the hen house, and it can't, we can't have that. So it properly belongs with us, but then our problem is, I'm sorry, I'm one of nine. I do my best. I lead, and you all lead, and Vice Mayor leads with the P and E committee. Everybody leads. Everybody has an opinion and many opinions on this thing, and it is hard to manage. It is difficult to manage collectively. So here you have a commission that has been repeatedly frustrated, in part because there is still no protocol, Councilmember Vang, for how and when their recommendations are to come before the governing body in the city council. And we've gone back and forth, Howard and I, well, this, this date, no, not this date, while these ones we can hear, no, these ones still have to be vetted by the city management and the police department, and I understand all that. But the underlying frustration is that, one, there is nobody on a day-to-day basis supporting the commission on a day-to-day basis. This is far beyond. Kathy Lester shut up to every meeting, or every meeting she's been asked. And she would continue to and have her men and women show up to the commission. That isn't the issue here. The issue is, is that there is not a full-time staff person, professional staff person dedicated to, if not being the voice of the commission, being the lead staff person for the commission, the executive officer. That's the best term I can use. Because if we bring that person in, I guarantee you that seventy-five percent of these problems are gonna be solved, because that person is going to actually develop the commission rules, help develop the commission rules, the procedures and the protocols, and work daily with the police department, the city management, and the mayor and council's office, and the P and P E committee. And this thing is then going to move more like clockwork. And in the absence of that, having OPSA, which already has its significant responsibilities around investigation and uh a- and and such, staffing this commission, it's not going to work. It will not work, and they will continue to be frustrated. The commission will be frustrated. We will be frustrated. Let's end the frustration. And let's hire somebody, and let's professionalize this commission. That doesn't mean we're gonna, you you, that that the authority is any greater at this point anyways than what the council's already decided. And then working with Vice Mayor Ashby, I think the only thing I might have a small distinction about in terms of the reporting of recommendations, with this commission, it may be better to report more than annually. It may, it might be better to report three times a year so that it's not just one big, you know, uh meeting, uh you know, at the end of the year. But I like the idea of P and P E, first hearing these recommendations, just like Law &amp; Ledge does on on legislation, just like Budget and Audit does on budget, and then uh come before the full council. So I think we can fix this and do much better and give this commission its voice, its power. Uh a- and a- and the city will be better for it. So, seven recommendations to come in the month of March. We've gotta work it out with the city manager, um and the police department, the commission, about the other recommendations. And in fairness to the commission and the community, actually agree upon and define a timeline for those other recommendations. In the meantime, when the P and P committee is ready to present its formal recommendations, we can fold that into how we move forward protocol-wise. And then I would ask Councilmember Harris, I don't know if it's necessary to include in your motion, but it wouldn't hurt to add the direction to um begin working with HR, as the Vice Mayor said, to develop the, what do you call it, the specs um for uh the hiring of a uh of a leader, an executive officer type uh to staff this commission. Jeff? You're on mute.
Yeah, so Mayor, respectfully, I I don't actually agree with your position on this.
Surprise.
I I don't think staff is the issue. I think process is.
No, I just, I completely disagree.
You know, we have the Officer of Public Safety Accountability, and it says in our city code that that support to the commission shall be provided by OPSA. Uh so, I I I think we're already there. You know, we have two employees who ostensibly provide oversight over the, over PD. Why don't we use them?
It's a, it's a mistake, because OPSA will never, never, ever uh lead, supervise, or manage this commission in the way that you want. It won't happen. It did not happen. Uh uh, it didn't happen during the last um leadership uh of OPSA, and it's not gonna happen now. Not gonna happen.
Well, again, I disagree, and so, no, I don't want to change my motion.
Okay, that's fine. I'm gonna work this on my own and bring it back to the city council. So that's fine. Okay, um Councilman Chenier?
Thanks, Mayor. Um I I I just want to be clear on a couple of things if I can. First of all, I think the the audit was well was well done and appreciate the recommendations and nothing in there that I wouldn't support. But I think we're getting a little conflated between the audit and things we need to do specifically for the commission, and then the very good work that that Vice Mayor Ashby has done, which I think has been totally necessary. Um so, uh you know, again, I want to be clear that when we, when we talk about the commission and work through that, there's budget implications, Mayor, for what you're suggesting, which, you know, again, I actually agree with. I think it's the right thing to do. But then there's all of this process that we don't do a good job with our, with our boards and commissions, um kind of a, pretty much across the board. Um we don't train and and all of those pieces, and that that's a separate discussion, and I think should uh should include you know, P and P E, and and I heard slightly different things from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Valenzuela. So I just think if if we're not crystal clear on the role, um you know, how much of a gatekeeper, what does that look like? We could get ourselves into trouble on that, too. What should go directly to council if somebody wants it to go to council, all of those things. And really include the Budget Committee and and Law &amp; Ledge in that discussion, because I think the rules that we put together ourselves are fairly murky on that. So I just want to make sure all of those pieces are included uh in the discussion that we're gonna have, because I also don't want staff to be confused about how we're operating. They need to be crystal clear about that as well. That's all I got.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jay. All right. Um so there is a motion and a second to support the motion. Um and what I'll do is agenda as Councilmember Getta um a uh this position question before the Budget and Audit Committee at one of the uh, at at one of the next uh budget and audit meetings. And also, think about other ways that uh Vice Mayor and others may have have suggested to sort of get at this question. So, very good. Let's call the role on the motion, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloi?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. Very good, and thank you again to Jorge and your team. Uh you know, it's a great audit, and now it's all about what we do with it. And you know, maybe the truth is, it's both structural and um a- a- and the personnel issues we've discussed. So we'll go forward. Thank you, everybody. That is our agenda. Um for today, are there um are there members of the public who wants to testify on items not on the agenda?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is a special meeting, so members of the public don't have the opportunity to make comments on items not on the agenda.
Okay, do we get to do ideas and questions, though?
You do.
Okay, well, then I have one, but I'll wait. I'll start with Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, um Mayor. Um I wanted to update my colleagues that I had a very important meeting this last weekend with the newly reforming Low Rider Council. There are representatives from over forty low rider clubs um from throughout Sacramento in attendance. And while we're gonna be working through some concerns specific to Miller Park and their ability to find another space to gather and and cruise while the safe ground is open at that location, um several other rather longstanding issues and concerns came to light that really predate my time on the council. Um specifically, they're feeling that there's some city policies and practices that are really preventing them from engaging in the fun, family-friendly, and really like culturally significant um gatherings that they've been doing for for decades, honestly. Um so I, we're gonna be reaching out to some of the city team for follow-up meetings with them, and I want to let the mayor and and Vice Mayor know that you've been directly invited, and so we'll be following up with your offices as well to to participate in those discussions with the the Low Rider Council. But in in the meantime, I want to initiate the process to eliminate no cruising zones in the city. Um this is a policy that, again, predates my time, um something that I've just briefly started talking with some of the businesses about, and some of the folks. I'd love to talk to Chief Lester and and other folks about this, but um you know, if we don't uh this is a really culturally significant thing that the low rider community gets to do, which is to gather, and they're not committing crimes in these vehicles. Some of these vehicles are worth more than than some of our houses, probably, that you're living in. Um so, I mean, these are really safe events and and really important um to the community to be able to gather. So I want to talk about how we eliminate no cruising zones, but even take a step further. And I've heard that there's some cities in California that actually create monthly cruising areas um that rotate through their cities so that they're sort of designated places where where folks can go and cruise and that the city supports. Um so I'd actually like to bring that back to council and and ask for the city manager's guidance, and in addition to Chief Lester and other folks at the city that I should be consulting with, so that we can try to have a thoughtful process and move forward that that very important conversation.
Councilmember Valenzuela, I will follow up with you, and we can talk about this offline.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I I I have a a request, but with a little bit of background on it. So I think in the last two weeks or so, I've had two great conversations with affordable housing developers, uh both of whom own land and would love to develop affordable housing for us. One on Stockton Boulevard, one down on Florin Road, or just off Florin Road. Um would love to move their projects forward, but uh we have very little money in our housing trust fund to be able to do that. Um as a result, I I've asked uh first Danielle Foster, um how many, what what do we have in the pipeline as far as affordable housing? And um we have, we have projects in districts two, three, four, five, six, and eight, ready to go if there was funding for it. We can do a lot with a little bit of money, uh I think. And so what that made me start thinking about was the mayor's plan uh early on passing Measure U and pre-COVID to bond against some portion of our Measure U money. And um you know, that got interrupted, obviously, but we were talking about uh tranches of a hundred million dollars and what we could do with that. Um the budget obviously didn't work because of COVID, and and that got stopped. But we do have all of these uh potential projects in line. Um probably twenty-five hundred units in in or on or about twenty-five hundred units. And um what I'd like to, and then I also reached out to the city treasurer, who said, yes, I just got off the phone with Goldman Sachs, and we know what it would cost and and what the payments would be. So, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if we can agendize either on its own or um uh aligning with with what you talked about this morning, Mayor. Um uh to get Danielle and John before the council to talk about the potential, so that we could have the policy discussion and the budget discussion about if we wanted to move forward with some level of bonding, what we could get uh for that as far as affordable housing units, what it would cost. So if we could do that, and and um Mr. City Manager, I'm happy to talk to you about timing and whether uh we want to wait till the spring, or that's something that we could bring back. I think it's pretty straightforward. Um but a hard discussion to have.
Yeah, Councilmember Chenier, I'm gonna tee up your request and Councilmember Valenzuela's as well becau- for next week's council meeting for the council to vote whether they want to proceed with exploring these two items.
Okay. And 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 if we can, that process that we now have, I'd like to throw into the discussion that we're gonna have uh when when Vice Mayor Ashby brings that we're going to have when Vice Mayor Ashby brings our new rules of how things move forward, if we can. But happy to have that come next week.
Perfect.
All right, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Geda, and Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me lead off with Councilmember Chenier here as well. I can't recall if I made this request in committee or in council, so I'll just repeat it again. I want to, in line with our effort to fund the gap financing for housing, also want to look at if there are areas where we can create a gradient fee structure. I'd like to move that, you know, forward, also to help incentivize, you know, development of some of our affordable housing projects in areas where it's more expensive because of the infrastructure. Again, I think there is a lot of success on the 60-50 Folsom area. You saw a lot of new activity and development there, I think we can do that also, particularly in areas of older commercial quarter that have higher infrastructure costs, just the wet stuff, sewer water, you know, stormwater runoff, all those issues. And I think, you know, supporting those who want to take an early risk is helpful. So I'd like to, you know, Mr. City Manager, if we can, you know, bring that back as well to look at how do we improve that gradient fee, and look at a gradient fee structure, you know, for those who are trying to jump in early and help figure out ways to address that gap financing. The other piece, I also want to, you know, I've received calls from members of the Low Rider Council as well, and want to, you know, echo the support here of looking at these policies that Councilmember Valenzuela brought up. The one thing I'd like to add as well, this was, you know, right before the pandemic happened, and we were looking at how do we support, you know, events that provide economic benefit and foot traffic to our businesses. And I know we had set aside some money for, you know, festivals and whatnot. Back to the Boulevard was a very successful event on Franklin Boulevard that brought in the low rider community, and like those to see, you know, how, in that process, you know, how we support the efforts of events like Back to the Boulevard as well. So, Mr. City Manager, if we could look at that, I know we had set some pot of money for that effort as well. Glad to see what kind of solutions we could provide.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Kind of going with what Councilmember Chenier brought up regarding the affordable housing. Can we discuss on as far as the gap, at what percentage of the project can the city approve that gap finance? Is it at 20% of the project, 15% of the project? Because, you know, my office is, you know, we're getting a lot of calls from different developers that are questioning about this gap finance. Is there any way, and, you know, that's not my, this area is not my experience whatsoever. Is there a policy that we can set as far as what percentage of the project the city can cover the gap financing, so it'd be a faster communication between our offices and the developers? That's one. And number two is, you know, some of the areas in our city, if we want to do any kind of development, affordable housing, the infrastructure in those areas are just not adequate. So whether it's the sewer line, water lines. And talking to some of these developers, it seems like if they do the job, it would be somewhat at a faster pace, but the question is the funding to bring that area up to code, or what our, you know, general plan is going to be. We can, you know, have that conversation as well to see if we want to kind of advance the money to these developers to do the work that ultimately the city is probably going to do in 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laloe.
I have a quick follow-up to that. So you're asking to bring back an item to the council to consider next week, whether or not we want to have a discussion about a policy on when we step in to do gap financing?
Okay. Yes, because again, you know, I have developers that are looking at 18% of their project, they're looking for gap finance. And to me, that's a lot of money. So pretty much developers want to put zero investment from their own and kind of expect it from us. But if we can create a policy that says, hey, we can do a 10% of gap financing for every project, or 5%, or 20%, but something that we can respond back to these developers.
We'll bring something back, we'll bring something back for the council to consider, but I think it's less about the policy and more about funds available to do any of that, and how we prioritize which projects would get the gap financing, because there's going to be more need than there will be resources. But we can have that conversation, but I'll tee it up for next week to see if we want to invest more time into crafting a policy like that.
Appreciate it, and also the infrastructure. So if it's something that they have to upgrade for the city, is that something that they have to wait for us to do it? Or can we ask them how much is it going to cost, and we'll just give them the money so they can bring it up to par where the city's standards are?
I think the mayor's going to have a request as well along these lines, so I'll leave it to him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much, I mean, all of these comments are really important and under the same umbrella, so to speak, of what we're hearing all over the city, that if we're going to have a real affordable housing strategy, if we're going to have a real climate strategy, if we are going to invest in infrastructure, to bring down the cost of projects that will remove some of the blight or the underutilized places in our city. And I know this morning I talked about the central city, really the logic applies to anywhere within the city. Then we need to have some more robust economic development tools. And I spoke this morning at the State of the Downtown about our use of the EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Finance Districts, in Aggie Square, and also in the rail yard, and suggested that at least when it comes to the central city, but again, it could apply elsewhere, that we develop a much more robust posture towards considering these tools to spark development, where, as I said this morning, at least in places where decades have shown us that without the spark, without the investment, that we're going to wait a long time, if not forever, to see the change that we and our constituents want to see. And so, Mr. City Manager, you and I have talked, I think it would be, I intend with you to agendize a workshop sometime this spring on that subject, and working in the months ahead with all the stakeholders, including the business community, the climate activists, the affordable housing advocates, again, the developers and others, to really look at a more aggressive use of this infrastructure finance tool. And so, Mr. City Manager, you would consider using your authority to go out and find the right kind of expert consultant, and we match that up, short-term, please, short-term, and we match that up with an agreed-upon date for a workshop sometime this spring to really set, get into this and potentially set some direction by the city council. I think that would be a very, very positive move, that isn't rushing it. As I joked today, you know, I could have announced in my usual, my usual style, let's get this EIFD thing up and running in 10 days, but I didn't say that. So instead, I said, let's really dive into this and consider it, and not overutilize a tool, but not underutilize a tool either that could really spark the kind of development that we want to see, not just in our central city, but elsewhere.
So I will agendize this item as well with the others, and provided the council wants to move forward, I will, under my authority, contract with a consultant to get on board to figure out what this could look like.
That's fine, this on the log, remember, there is one distinction between the mayor and the council members. I do have the ability to agendize a workshop without having to get pre-approval from the city council.
I just want to be prepared for the workshop.
Okay. Okay. We are going to have a workshop, yeah, go ahead.
If, you know, if we're going to do a workshop on the EIFD, I know today you talked about the downtown EIFD, but I know we were in progress with the Stockton Boulevard EIFD already. That's the phase two of Aggie Square. And I also know that for many years, we've been discussing the Sacramento Center for Innovation EIFD. So if you're going to agendize that, I'd like to make sure that that area where the CMCs is included in that conversation.
I think that's great, I mean, it's a tool for the whole city. Obviously, this morning was the State of the Downtown, so it was appropriate to focus the discussion on the downtown. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the city council, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.